The proposed changes? And would you like to go to them, Mike?
Sure, I can summarize them topically. If that's of assistance and others can fill in. I guess start with first thanks again to the planning board for their hard work and also since our last meeting to the Energy Committee and engineers who immediately dived in and tackled questions and proposed changes that were identified at the public forum last week, Thursday. So, thanks to their efforts, we were able to give you at least some additional language for your consideration tonight. So, we still follow the same format with the two ordinances. The first, our proposed revisions of Chapter 16, which addresses the site review. And in that chapter, we grapple with the suggestion that, once approved, planning board approvals of grid-scale power generation facilities should not be assignable. And that an assignment should come back to the boards, that you can test the capacity and willingness of the new company to meet its financial and other commitments. And specifically, we talked about decommissioning in last week's meeting. So, I proposed adding that as a new subsection in Section 16205, which there it talks generally about a successor having to comply with requirements imposed by the planning board. But more specifically, with respect to grid-scale power generation facilities, that they may not be assigned without planning board approval.
That's a good addition.
That was from a comment by, you know, a member of the public forum.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Alexander or?
Yeah, Alexander.
Why don't we look at page one there first? I don't recall why we limited the notification to just the adjacent town.
Well, it isn't. It was 300 feet, including the adjacent towns, wasn't it?
Yeah, so this is an additional notice provision, in addition to your other notice requirements. So, you know, it could be broader if that were the recommendation of the planning board. But it was the nature of the conversation today.
Obviously, public hearings are a newspaper. But if you wanted to notify the town government that's down the occasion.
All adjacent towns is a?
But I mean, you can't, I can't notify butters because I don't have the information. So, you'd notify the town.
Right, 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 notify the town. What do you think, Mike? Is that, does it have a purpose to that?
Well, I guess, just from a practical standpoint, I would wonder, you know, where do you draw those boundaries? Do you, is it just the immediately adjacent towns or is it towns that are beyond? Do you go two towns beyond?
I would say if it was a town line, it would seem.
That would seem appropriate to me to one of that.
Somebody that feels that it should be broader than that, but I don't know. I don't know how much of an impact that really is. Right, it's obviously going to get pressed any way you look at it, so.
Let me just probe that question. How far does the city current, you know, if someone, public hearing's 300 feet.
300 feet, okay.
But it's a butter, property owners there.
Property owners, 300 feet.
So, like, we're on the town line with Thomas?
Well, yeah, we don't run into that too often. I mean, we had a small addition to the Primos that I think Alzad needed to be notified.
Home Depot, we had.
Home Depot we notified, yep.
Because they were right on the line.
Did you notify the property owners over the line or?
No, the town.
The town.
Yeah, but the property owners, they had concerns, they had to come out and speak.
I think we did in the paper, too.
But would it be a big deal to, just to notify the select boards of our adjacent towns? Immediately adjacent towns?
That's what I was already calling for, I believe.
No, I think it's just.
It's saying the butters.
Yeah, the buts are town line.
It's just the one additional town.
Yeah, right.
That's currently framed, so certainly that could be broadened if that were the recommendation of the board.
No, it's just, it's not that many towns. Alzad, Thomasville.
The other question would be, do you, do you contact, you just notify EMA in Knox County?
Yeah, because of Route 90.
What about if you just notified EMA, Knox County EMA?
Would do that, too.
Yeah, do that, too.
We'll go by one, yeah?
They can be notified, but distributed.
That's what I was wondering, if you could just, just go back to county and say.
Sort of like floodplain regulation, they notify.
Would you, please?
The Fuma notifies EMA and they send it to all of them.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
That's what I was wondering, if maybe that's, because it's a, it's a safety issue, too, that might be impacting.
So, the county, Knox County EMA.
For distribution, too.
For distribution, too.
So, is everybody agreeing with that?
I don't know, does Knox County feel okay about something like that? I don't know.
She's a commissioner, by the way. She runs the whole thing.
EMA came up previously when we were talking about whether, whether the contact person would do the city's fire department or EMA as far as safety and.
But this would be more for distributing the information to other towns.
You think that's appropriate?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, you got that, Kevin?
Yes. So, just Knox County EMA, not additional.
Right, and then with the recommendation of that, that they could then.
Distribute it?
Yeah, distribute it, but they do apparently, and other things. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to Chapter 19.
19, yeah.
Are we good with Chapter 16? With the changes?
Mm-hmm.
Mike, did you have anything else to add?
Forever hold your peace.
He's never going to go back to Rockland.
He likes Rockland, he said that.
He's never going to read this again.
He wants to read this.
Nothing else.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we can say, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, too.
All right, turning next then to the ordinance mending Chapter 19. We start first with an additional definition, and I'll explain why in a moment. This is a community-based renewable energy project. This is a consolidation of definitions of community-based renewable energy project and ownership, local ownership from, from main statute that addresses that form of shared, typically solar project. It was suggested by Energy Committee that distributed power generation facilities, except shared solar, be located on the site they are to fuel or adjacent to the site they are to serve, provide energy tools, et cetera. And so, simply to craft that exception from that requirement, I look to state law for what, what we already had for definitions and model that, if that's acceptable to Energy Committee, consistent with the recommendation.
That's good.
So, that distinction appears in Section 19309, which is where use of distributed power generation facilities is addressed.
In a special class.
It was also recommended that the, so as not to preclude smaller facilities, it was recommended that the 500-kilowatt element of the definition of distributed power generation facility be removed. So, but we continue that concept with respect to planning board because it was at that level where it was thought that impacts might be suggested, planning board reviews. So, we attempt to draw that distinction now in Section 19309, 1H as well.
84, actually.
So, this is the question about H.
300.
The info is each.
Page 4.
And you've changed it from what it was, Kevin, to, because there were questions brought up in the public forum about, I just want to make sure I'm clear about what the, what the.
What the change?
Whoever, somebody answer.
Kevin, make me correct you if I'm wrong, because I'm just reading this now, that the questions raised were one, could someone buy a lot in a residential neighborhood and put up a power generation or so? And I think this attempts to preclude that, generally speaking. And the question also came up, that the way, if you read this literally, power generation facilities under 500 KW could be construed as prohibited.
And the question was, and the question was whether or not they would be allowed anywhere, because they showed up as an exception. So, those were.
In this, if this appears to create a tiered place where grid scale goes in whatever zone you'd be so direct, distributed generation goes in places where there's a need for onsite power.
Okay.
And renewable, such as solar, could be constructed anywhere.
In a small scale.
Still limited by the special use class zones, though.
Against reviews.
Yeah, so they are not necessarily authorized in A or AA.
But what's good is that the definition takes out the limitation on what is, so you could have lower than, and it's not looked at as prohibited, it's defined as, it's when you get to 500, that's the private class. A neat way of doing it. Very nice.
There, with respect to the very last clause on that page, preserved by the, supplied by the facility, is it likely?
Did you have a little coffee?
Is it likely that the facility would be heated with steam generated on the adjacent lot and not, not used wet, or not? In other words, is that limited somehow?
So, your question is, would they sell all of their electricity but use their steam onsite or on the adjacent lot and still want to follow that brand?
Which would, would want to be okay, wouldn't we?
Right, why don't we sell steam elsewhere?
Is that consistent with your intent?
Yeah, I think so, I'm trying to decide whether there's a language problem there or not.
Because right now it's lumped into electricity rather than and/or steam.
Maybe I want to see, see, might want to say thermal energy, because it could just as well as being hot water.
Yeah.
What's that replacing?
It's an addition.
Clear.
An alternative criteria for site.
Would be cited?
In the last, I don't have exact language yet to formulate.
By electricity or and/or?
Thermal energy.
Thermal energy supply.
Because you are thermal energy supplied by the facility.
Yep. Or on an adjacent lot. Yep.
So, then, in such a case, that would not actually be classified as a distributed power generation, so, given this language, I think. Right?
No, it would still be selling electricity.
I think so.
But it wouldn't be, as, as the language is written now, it would not, it would fall under distributed power generation, right? Because it would not be power generation equipment which is designed and will be operated to provide or to offset the base of the power.
Or offset, or offset.
If it's, let's see. I guess it depends on what the, I mean, if the intention is just to supply steam, then, I mean, if the intention is distributed to supply steam to heat and solar, right? And then maybe just make some money by selling the electricity, would it actually be, I mean, I think the idea is great, I'm just wondering about the interpretation of the language, like, would the intention of the electricity would be to offset use, right? It would be to essentially just make some money back to.
I don't think it would practice to that.
No, typically they don't, because they're not in the business of selling electricity. You know, if you're going to do that, you need to know the ISO markets. I mean, it's a full-time job to be able to manage the sale of electricity. It's not just, you run the unit and away it goes. Pretty rare, very rare.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
But that doesn't mean that it, it isn't, it doesn't go back into CM or into the power company and then they get credit for it.
Right.
They're selling it then.
Right, yeah. Now, that, that is, you know, is probably the route they would go rather than try to sell it.
Distributed power generation doesn't, the definition intentionally doesn't include the intent to sell power.
That's your grid scale.
Right.
It includes offset.
That's it. Good. Dust fumes vapor, the answers.
Yeah, so many of the recommendations and proposals aim with respect to fine-tuning the air emissions limitations. And I believe you focused back last night, is that correct, Energy Committee?
Yes.
And suggested that there be a third category, so that we avoid potential fatal flaws with our current regulations. So, and that third category appears here as sub-paragraph 2, under air pollution, and relates to distributed power generation facilities serving new or substantially expanded facilities. And they propose a requirement of a net reduction of total discharges of regulated air pollutants of at least 10%. And provide means for attempting to measure the same. The engineers have, and working with Larry, have also provided language on how to actually do that in this, in the paragraphs that follow, sub-paragraphs 1, 2, and 3.
That was another question that came up last.
They'll have to try to model it and calculate what, what is there. They'll be able to pull some of the permits, but they may have to model some and then predict what they're going to offset.
Any particular matter?
Yes. John, before this evening's meeting, raised a good question about, what do we need, a similar, better description of how to assess the 25% reduction for grid scale?
Yeah.
And we think that was a good caution.
Maybe.
I'm not sure what we would be measuring, but seems like we'd almost be comparing it to a, a non-co-generation facility.
Right, again, the whole intent of even grid scale for it to work is it has to be converting to natural gas and it has to be in some type of district, energy or district heating application. And where they're going to start to supply thermal now, those boilers would go offline. They should be able to calculate that pretty easily, especially if it is attached to an industrial or other type facility that may already have an air permit. We'll be able to pull that right off the state's website and get their, their, you know, emissions information. It's when you don't have that, like, like we said, it's a, it's an apartment complex. It's a, the downtown area possibly, they'll have to find a way to model that and calculate that. That's what we're trying to say down below, using benchmarking data and things like that. But at least there's an exercise where they have to try to define it.
So, can you tie in the 25% with this?
Is that a little steep?
It is, well, you know, so again, in a traditional combined heat and power application, where you're converting from oil to natural gas with these new high-efficient combined heat power packages, whether it's a RSEV engine or a gas turbine, even though you're burning more fuel, there's typically a 30 to 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions because of the efficiency of the new system. You're, again, you're coming off of oil, so the 25% is, actually gives you a little bit of leeway, as long as it's in those parameters. It's converting to natural gas and it's, you know, taking advantage of newer technology and the existing boiler is going offline. That's, that's easy to do in an industrial manufacturing setting. It's going to be, it is going to be difficult to do if, if it's a district heating system with commercial or residential clients.
Then we could probably tweak this just slightly, too.
Mike, do you agree?
I do. I, and I, and I think probably the practicality is that this is on the scale of more of the industrial side. I just, you know, the idea of distributing this thermal energy down Main Street and connecting on to, you know, a bunch, bunch of small businesses and residences is just seems so cost prohibitive to me that I just, I don't see that as being viable.
I agree.
I told you about that town in Denmark, that my parents' friends live in, and they've done that all through the town, but of course, they spend.
But that was Denmark.
Yeah, they don't spend money on infrastructure like that, I know. Yeah.
Or for size.
For for size.
Yeah. I mean, they would publicly subsidize.
Right, yeah, that's.
Over there, yeah.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So, does this paragraph say that they got to reduce the pollution, consider it all underground?
That's nothing to that, that's what we're grappling with, clarifying.
What I was intending to say is that you would, I'm going to make up an example here. Let's say there were, there's only one large user in Tulsa, and let's say there was a second, say FMC and say O'Hara still had a large power plant. Then, that you would be putting in a combined heat and power plant, generating electricity, it would be providing thermal energy to O'Hara and FMC.
Right.
So, it needs to be a 25% reduction from what those two districts' air emissions currently are.
And you seem to think that that is doable.
As long as they're converting to natural gas.
Right, right.
Or converting away from oil.
Because they're, they're using, right now, down FMC, they're using compressed.
Compressed engine, yeah.
Yeah, right, so.
This is what we're wanting to.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily work that way, because they're, they're already using compressed.
They're already using it, yeah. But again, they fall into a different category, so there's, they just have to show that it's no increase, basically.
Because they were just converting, so, if they were going to use their own stuff, they would be distributed generation.
But it, but it was separate plant selling steam to them, then they'd have to meet this.
Right, so in the case, let's say a school building, a small town, that would be in sub-paragraph, that would always be sub-paragraph 1, correct?
Yes, if it's an existing facility, possibly.
Sure. So, in that case, that's.
No injuries.
That school, though, would not, I mean, does a school typically have an air emissions license or permit for, for, you know, you?
A high school, probably not.
And in that case, then, that.
Yeah, and these limitations apply only if a permit's required.
Yeah, okay, all right, so would permit, so, all right, that makes sense.
Doesn't, doesn't close, do we?
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
But establishes requirements for those that emit enough to require a permit.
Okay, that makes sense.
What if the same high school decided to put in, fellas, wood fellas?
It's all triggered off of size, so they still may fall underneath having to have an air permit.
Kevin, maybe, I know there's some structural stuff going on, maybe it's in here, in the note from Dan 4.1, it made it, it was intended to make it clear that you're counting both. Yeah, did the, did the calculations including both onsite thermal, any onsite electric or anything, as well as power purchased over the grid? Does that get you here somewhere else?
Where it's offsetting?
Yeah.
That's in sub-paragraph 2.
Yes. I think it should be in sub-paragraph 1 as well.
Would the electricity distributed from the grid end on site, thermal energy?
Yeah, so it's more than just their boilers going idle. Again, now you're, now they're producing electricity, so you're not bringing it through the transmission distribution system, there's traditional, you know, 5% losses. So, now, whatever central power plant has been providing the power, you can consider those emission savings as well. You're taking those kilowatts off of the grid.
So, what are we adding to that?
Yeah, so, to sub-paragraph 1, we need to add the concept that the known net increase is to be calculated based on both current onsite thermal and electrical generation as well as power purchased over the grid. That was a drafting error on my part, I admitted that.
Well, we want to at least, we, I think, we have a couple of, no net increase shall be calculated based on both the current onsite thermal and electrical generation as well as power purchased over the grid. Yeah. Our emissions, should they be measured by mass? Is it like total?
It's flexible.
You should say that.
I would set it.
Never look at that one.
They usually have to monitor it for instantaneous values as well as annual tons. All right, so mass, yeah. Then it'd be smart to have for a minute.
We'll add that. We still have the crap with how to address the measurement for grid scale that we were talking about. Could get fairly cumbersome, but it could read something like, at least 25% of the air pollutants that would be discharged were the same electricity and thermal energy utilized by the facilities served by the grid scale power generation facility, not produced by.
Oh.
Is someone supposed to be able to review against something?
It seems like that we're trying to, trying to get at, is it fair? It's a little hard to word it efficiently.
And again, just to be, you know, it is achievable, but they're going to have to do, anyone coming in here to propose a grid scale power generation facility to meet that 25%, is going to have to do a lot of legwork and signing up clients and it, it's almost a showstopper, in my opinion.
In, in Rockland specifically or in other places?
Anyone that would, you know.
I mean, like, is it a showstopper because of the, the specific sort of character of Rockland in terms of its industrial development or just anywhere?
No, just as far as reducing the emissions. Most people, most people don't have to deal with that.
Oh, I see, all right, I see.
Most developers don't have to deal with that.
Because it's not a restriction.
Yeah, they just get the air permit as long as they've got the state and federal satisfied. They typically don't have to worry about the impact of a community like this. Does it mean that this is bad? It just, it may, it may deter some people, yeah. I think it's doing what it's intended to do.
Let's go back to the nation's question. I guess one, there's one question, there's a political question and there's a technical question.
Right.
Is the 25% threshold technically not feasible or a law?
No, no, it's, it's definitely feasible, absolutely.
Oh, you mean a showstopper in terms of deterrent development?
Yeah, because they're going to have to do a lot of legwork, like I said, signing up clients upfront and getting that commitment and, and actually doing some design around it, modeling it, more than they're typically accustomed to doing.
I would propose at this point, that that be something that council grapples with? That that's a real, I do see that as a political question.
As a political, maybe it is, or if it's just a question of the 10% or 15% or?
Well, or what council really wants to be sitting around, or, I think that's, that's the question, the elephant in the room, that everybody was asking about, too, in the conversation that council is at. I don't think we're tasked with asking that question, so I would, I'm a little uncomfortable addressing it, let me say that. It's not, it's just because I don't think that's what my role is here, but that it would go to council as this is something you need to address.
I mean, we have the 25% figure because that was the recommendation of the, of the Energy Committee or members of the Energy Committee.
Yep.
And it, the right application, it is achievable.
I'm comfortable leaving it in, but that it goes with a caveat saying, this is what needs to happen at your level with that.
You need to understand what it.
We need to also clarify.
Well, there will be, I was going to, I talked to Mr. Anderson, there will be a couple of the four sections of the council line, I'm sure there's going to be some of these questions.
Well, I. Well, I, I think it should come from us as a, that's where I feel, kind of, we got to that point. This is where council needs to pick up, what do you think, Carol?
Maybe a cover memo from the board identifying that as an issue.
But now, how to put it, sometimes when it's difficult to understand, even in a location like this, somebody's given example, so. So, how it's intended to work. Would that help to explain what the new plan is?
We'll probably fix the language, we have to fix the language question, what we're really saying is that you're.
Well, I think it's a side, what you're really saying.
Right.
And that to me is the big issue.
There's two issues, yeah, there's two issues right now.
See, the two issues on the point is just assuming the goal is, assuming one agrees with the intent for a residual power facility to have, actually have production. There's a bit of clarifying the language, so it's not, so I think you can read this over with broadly. And then there's a separate question of what's your death threshold be?
Or does the, does the city not want any grid scale power? I mean, it could be that it's just not allowed. I mean, I think that's a question that gets asked.
Yeah, if that's, that's something we.
Well, this is what I'm saying, it goes to council.
Yeah, right, they're asked us to construct some kind of.
Well, so you leave this in.
Long way prohibited.
No, what I'm saying is you leave it where it is, and you say, these are the questions that we see that need to be answered at this point. That needs to be tightened up. But I'm still waiting to hear what the, where the city wants to go with grid scale power.
Could somebody explain the and after Rockland and adjacent municipalities, or, the or is actually, or by enhanced efficiency measures at one or more existing facilities in Rockland or adjacent? What's that saying? It sounds like 25% of all the pollution in Rockland, or you can make one facility more efficient.
Well, we've already talked, we're not talking about all the 25%.
Right.
So we're gonna, we're gonna find language correct.
Figure that out.
Well, let's just, let's just keep the, let's assume you got a facility that's submitting 100 tons per year.
Right.
In some.
Yeah.
When I say 100 tons, I'm adding up CO, CO2, NOx, SOx, 100 tons. So you're wanting to reduce 25 tons of emissions. So, you know, one way to do that would be simply to provide thermal near to a thermal plant to somebody else.
Right.
Another way to do that would be to say, pay for a boiler replacement in R S U 13.
Okay, okay.
Somewhere else.
Oh, that's interesting, okay.
And efficiency measures, there's other things they can do, not just replace a boiler, but put a new burner management combustion control system on, upgrade new controls.
Well, you have to, you just have to do it.
Hack this and give it to the 25%. So they could finance other projects to improve the efficiency, which again is reducing the emissions in the area, in the region.
And adjacent towns would be, for instance, if they helped, you know, the ore, Dragon.
Dragon Ore, I think when we were talking about this, initially that was really intended to capture the hospital and the school and a couple of larger commercial businesses.
And the city, the municipality, I mean, if you're able to help.
So this is a little like, like wetland remediation in some way. I mean, you know, you're allowed to kill one place if you.
Kill one somewhere else.
But this is exactly the way, this is exactly the way the regional greenhouse gas initiative works. Is that you're funding efficiency, you know, air emissions are funding efficiency measures in other places. So there's some other language in the recommendations that I just wanted to clear about. I mean, back to that paragraph? Yeah, for the first page, I mean, I typed it up, but. Yeah, and I just kind of threw that in there again, because not everything is gonna have an air permit or where the emissions levels are well defined or the data is available. So when that's not the case, how do you, you have to have at least an agreed upon approach on how do they calculate, model what the emissions levels are. So, you know, when it's lacking data, I was just trying to put some wording in there to, what's the process on getting that? Good. And what do we mean by impacted? Is it, when it's in?
Building impact.
In the industrial, it may not be the right word, but it's basically, yeah, so if it is limited to the industrial park, you know, that's the impacted zone, or it is the hospital or the schools, you know, what are we talking, a one mile radius, five mile radius? So that's when I say impacted area, that's what, that was the intent. We can change that as needed. Yeah, just, and when, you know, we're not gonna go through every building and see what the boiler nameplate rating is and try to calculate that, there's gonna be some benchmarking EPA information to say, for, you know, a commercial building, here's the typical emissions levels, and we'll just use that as agreed upon information. Larry, I don't know if you noticed, you had the fuel consumption data, I just added in there that we, you know, agree on the characteristics of the fuel as well.
Is this in the review process?
They have to put that together prior to the application, right, or prior to approaching the?
May it be acceptable to the planning board?
Evan?
No?
Can be and or, whatever.
Oh, what if one says yes and the other one says no?
Should the per plan?
Oh, I think the other ones are good.
Question I'd, I'll give a kind of issue, don't you folks do a pre-application meeting for all larger projects anyway?
Yeah, we tend to, sometimes, but yeah, for larger projects, we tend to.
You're asking if the planning board does, or if John does?
If, I was, I was asking for larger projects, isn't there typically a pre-application meeting at primary level?
Yes.
Yeah, if you like that, would be, you would come in with a list of these questions you need the board to resolve at that pre-application.
But we have to be very careful not to make any.
Decisions.
Decisions at that point, yeah. Give advice, but that's it.
Yeah, you'll help me repair, understand and rephrase the phrase when commercial or residential areas are impacted. And it could be we take the commercial or residential out, and we just say, the proposed site location, you know. I can help. Extend beyond the industrial zone, is that what we're trying to say, if it exceeds the industrial zone, the impacts, or? Yeah, I believe so.
What about being allowed?
Or even in the industrial zone, there may not be emissions data for all the industrial clients. So maybe just start since we're knowing emissions data exists.
Right, exactly.
And leave off the prefatory line.
Yeah, that's what I.
That's confusing me.
Okay. An impact is essentially rather, because we're looking for, you're simply looking at emissions levels in the area.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Where are the emissions data?
Okay, I think that fixes it.
Yeah.
I think so, too. So on that same page, I think it was John or someone had raised a question about the code enforcement having, officer having to inspect, and wanted some solace that he could accept the opinions of other inspectors. So I had the phrase, with respect to periodic inspections, after the issue, so this is sort of good occupancy that he could require, you know, rather do the inspection himself, he could accept our citation by experts that it could be just be met.
Yeah, didn't, didn't you Dan say, say that we do expect these people to do this yearly?
Yeah.
Themselves.
If they do have an air permit, they would definitely have to do annual testing.
So they would, they would show the results of that test to John.
Yes.
Rather than have him do it.
Didn't you pick that up somewhere else, too?
Yeah, that's it.
They submit?
The inspections and maintenance program at the end.
You got this memorized now, Kevin?
That's the task, can he go aside and just type it out?
Yeah, he's been reading.
Dan, did, does Scarborough CHP, does that record any, what's the threshold?
I've been meaning to look that up, I'll look that up tomorrow, yeah.
Because at some point.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. No, that 150 kilowatt did not require an air permit. Does it make stock, that boiler input?
It is, I believe it's 10 million.
10 million MFPTU.
Roughly translates into a 200,000 square foot double lane. For EVs, so that's a pretty sizable.
Right.
Yeah, pretty sizable location.
I'm gonna try to do math to convert that to a CHP and something like that. 200,000 translate into.
But be careful, you might get a little more balding at the top of your head.
See how much hair?
Yeah, right.
I'll get that tomorrow. So with respect to the water cooling towers, Dan had recommended adding a requirement at the time of application that the applicant submitted dispersion model of the water pool.
Yep.
And I attempted to capture what you wanted, who knows if I did, so.
It could be water vapor flume.
It wasn't just water. Probably, so that's on top of page seven.
Can I?
Water vapor flume.
Can I make another suggestion, because when I read it, I wasn't sure what you were saying.
I wasn't real sure either.
Applicants shall submit with its application a dispersion model. Do you mind moving that forward?
They'd be happy to migrate.
I wasn't sure where the applicant, whether it was the application of the.
Or the water.
Of the water flume, or?
So you want water vapor flume?
Yeah, whatever it should be, but if, with its application.
It's vapor, not just water.
Yes.
With its application moves up.
Excellent.
That's a category recommendation, Dan, for those changes.
Just with its application, I'm just saying, it's self.
And it was, of course, mentioned about the visual standards, but you know, this is only gonna take place in in an industrial park, in many of these.
And there are still screening and buffering.
Yeah.
Standards that apply elsewhere in the performance, maybe, there's not listed here.
We don't typically discuss visual in our zoning.
Yeah, what are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm thinking of, just me in terms of how you.
I'm sure it varies, but let's say, what were we talking about, 30, 30,000?
I don't know how far you went with that research, Dan, but I, you know, most of them, you know, I'm thinking of like the Kalpine facility, which we talked about in prior meetings, is, you know, probably 40 feet tall.
40 feet, yeah.
They tend to spread them out.
Right.
Because to push water up costs energy, and so it's better to, if they've got the real estate available onsite to do it, it's better to keep the tower shorter, so they don't have to pay to let the water.
Let me just clarify, you were talking about just being in the industrial zone. Are these provisions, that was a structural problem we had to ask, do these provisions apply to cooling towers regardless?
Yeah, they apply to both. So that is in three. So it's any power generation or other production facility that cools water by exposing the water to the ambient air.
Was it you?
If you said the smaller, the smaller facilities tend to use that, I forgot the word, but the radiator type of cooler.
Close.
A dry.
Close cool.
A dry.
A dry, yeah.
Even the larger ones can have an air cooled condenser. It just takes up a lot more real estate.
That's the slide you had, you know, that.
Yes.
Is there anything small that we might be making a little burdensome?
Let's just say that the small ones don't tend to use the cooling towers.
Well, it depends on how much heat you have to reject.
So an HPH season, maybe not gonna have that.
The big cooling towers for a big grid scale independent power plant are primarily there to condense the steam on the back end of the steam turbine, it's a closed loop system. We won't have that, we'll be sending steam or hot water up to some process steam or heating host. The heat will be removed out there, it's gonna return at the temperature we need it, and it's just in that closed loop. The only heat rejection we should have to do is if it's not, it's not, the system is not taking enough, or the engine has to reject loop oil, you know, cooling and things like that, it should be pretty minimal.
Those ones in a nuclear power plant have big.
Natural draft, no fans on them.
So is that a, is that a technology that's no longer used then, or some of those great things?
No, they still sell those pretty prominently, but again, these are, those are 1,000 megawatt systems, those are big plants.
Very significant facility, yeah.
Of course, we still don't have, have an upward limit on our size of the facility, obviously.
No, this, I mean, the, not a kilowatt or megawatt size, but the water consumption, these other ordinances are gonna limit. Again, it can still be done, it's just gonna be very costly to adhere to those.
So what limitation would limit the program? So that was, that was kept at 10 megawatts, right?
Now, yeah, now that we've dropped it down, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The 2 billion was about 100 megawatt.
Correct.
I'm glad I caught that, yeah.
So we really don't have to address an upward limit on kilowatt because of the water that we have in there now?
Totally that, I mean, again, if the intent is they have to reduce emissions, they can't just come in here and sell power. You know, because if they just come in here to sell power without steam or process hosts to sell the thermal to, they're never gonna meet the emissions reduction ordinance. So that's, that's gonna prevent that upper size anyway, and to be honest, you don't have 100 megawatts worth of electricity demand in the city of Rockland, most likely. Nor could the distribution network here possibly handle that.
Wouldn't be enough customers anyway, with the scale.
There are two other, rather than creating number, we'd argue, there are two, maybe three other things, the water usage and the offsetting existing limits, that they're gonna impose a practical limit.
Yeah.
It may move around a little bit, might be 7 megawatts in this case, or 2 megawatts in that case, and 17 and that, depending on how technology evolves.
Yeah. I don't see how any, looking at these, I don't see how anyone could come in here and propose a 30 megawatt plant. I just couldn't, it's not feasible.
Oh, you mean a 30 megawatt plant?
I would, I mean, I don't, that's just my initial impression, again, not knowing the city that well, what is in the industrial park, I would be amazed if there's 30 megawatts worth of power in that industrial park.
They're gonna, they're gonna go across the border to Thomaston anyway, maybe this.
Well, there, you know, for Dragon, you can't, you can't sell the thermal over there, because that kiln over there takes such high heat, that needs 2,000 degrees, these things are gonna be pushing off, if it's a recip engine, it might only be 200 degrees, if it's gas turbine, it might be 400 degrees, so really, it's not a good application of the area because of the kiln.
Yeah, interesting.
So other changes since you last reviewed the document are an attempt to clarify what model, what version of the codes and standards would apply, so sort of targeting, anticipating first reading, although that may be a short first reading date. And as amended thereafter.
Yeah, I would change the, where you say clarify on fuel gas supply, train, train is that, that last stretch of pipe when it's feeding the boiler or CHP system, so really, that should say fuel gas supply system.
Yeah, I was wondering, I thought we had trains coming in there.
Or they tap it at the screen, bring it in, or actually, if it's a CNG system, it would, that would encompass that entire system.
Excellent.
Sometimes I get ingrained in, engineer, maybe all. Next on page eight is, it was suggested that the concept of the code officer inspecting and then having some punitive authority be injected into the gas piping safety issues, so that language appears there.
Do you want to say this, this is in addition to any clients you may focus, or officers you may impose?
Not just the code officer, most, when it comes to the fuel gas supply systems, the, is you, when I say local authority, it's usually the, the fire chief or the fire inspector, and he can certainly come in and demand them to shut down if he sees unsafe emissions.
Do you want to include the same language as on page six, or are there ways for part of the facilities operator to demonstrate, so they can put in, if you live on top of that?
Yeah, it says that.
So, that's typically what's done, yeah, they have to prove it, and when they're ready to prove it, he's there to witness it.
So, you reckon it's really going to be the fire chief, or the fire inspector?
And/or.
And/or, yeah.
I mean, I do think it's, given that, for those certification, it is important there to be a sitting person today, doesn't have to be John, it could be.
And/or fire.
Yeah.
So, Carol, you recommend not reserving the right to impose additional remedies and seek other remedies every time this occurs?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if.
It's a lot of burden, just to shut them down, so, probably get some money.
Yes, that's right, and, you know, and you may want to have an escalating thing going on, you know, fines first, then.
Well, if you shut them down, and especially if it's a manufacturing facility, they're losing money, they're losing revenue every day.
That's what I'm saying, you know, you, you start with the fines.
Right.
And, you know, but you have that in your back pocket.
What you're saying is reverse it, have there be other mechanisms before you revoke the occupancy permit?
Not necessarily, you may want to go straight to it, you know.
Yeah, the, the nice thing about the occupancy permit is that it's immediate, and it's within the officer's authority, penalties, you have to go to court.
Yeah, and that could drag out.
Yeah, the standard man you do.
Comforts them in time consuming process.
Yeah, because you, you don't want, want them to be able to say, well, you shut us down, you can't, you can't get any additional blood from our, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand why, I'm not sure it's necessary, but we can certainly add it if, if, if that's.
Yeah, you can argue even without that, that.
Yeah, it's a statutory remedy under 4452, but we can certainly add that phraseology.
I think fines are fine, just as an option, yeah.
Can I ask, I want to go back to the question John asked, cooling towers, this is a question to Dan.
Right.
If you look at the cooling power standards, if you're on, on page six, and we're assuming these will apply to any power generation or other commercial use of cooling towers? The note I had from the committee was whether or not there should be a size threshold here, or whether you just leave it open?
Size of?
The cooling tower.
The cooling tower itself?
Yeah, whether a cooling tower under some number of, or whether the open tower, actually, open tower, you probably want to be, you know, so you don't want to be gullied stuff, you know, edge of a, they, they don't.
I mean, kind of the practical minimum size of an open tower system is around 150 tons, a variety of things that drive that, partially that's driven by the energy performance. When you get that energy performance, though, it comes with a little more work when you have an open tower, you've got to watch your water chemistry, you've got to deal with makeup water, you've got to deal with maintenance of the tower, when you have a, a dry system, there's almost no maintenance, other than belts and motors and that sort of thing for, you know, the air moving equipment, so, there's a threshold there that, you know, below 150, it's pretty unusual to see anything that'll be connected to a, to an open tower, and that's why you don't see, you know, malls and, you know, smaller facilities running open towers.
So, if I was just part of the needs, I don't.
I don't think so.
And you already have setbacks.
Cooling towers always going to be something that should be reviewed, they'll never be a case.
Right, right.
That's what, as Murray thought about, giving this ability to grow things, progress, have some state of regardless.
You need to notify the post office.
And there's plenty of information on Legionnaires' disease that's closely connected to cooling towers, and it doesn't care what size it is, it will exist in any existing puddles, but, you know, blowing out all the bubbles and creating plumes and, you know, blowing the water around and that sort of thing, you know, it's all different.
So, we should get rid of our dehumidifiers?
Empty them and let them dry every saw, it'd be a good plan.
Or have one of the drains, another tank.
Even though.
I'd love to pour bleach in it.
Do that, sure.
All right, so, the next challenge.
It is a big one.
Is noise.
Yeah, right.
In terms of what system you want to recommend.
Now, John, you recommended B, right?
I recommended B, and I suggested that if we want to apply it to any other manufacturing type of facilities or facilities that may produce irritating noises on different spectrums, that should be something we should look at as we're rewriting the site plan of the audience.
Can we follow up on your question, John, Mike, because I think when you and I talked, you're concerned about the, the spectral approach was, I think you gave the example of the bar, but right now, with the bar, you've got with a smartphone app, I think at least get.
By the way, I downloaded it.
At least get a sense of, you know, are they somewhere close or not? Mike, what would you say, I mean, is, is the spectral useful in other applications? How difficult is it for an owner to determine if they're?
Exceeding the.
Yeah, if they're in compliance or not, I think probably, that's not a real simple thing for a typical owner to achieve, other than the smartphone app, which gives you the weighted average, to look at each of the frequency bands, you need more sophisticated equipment to be able to break the sound down into those various frequencies, it's more than just a walk around too, I mean, it's setting equipment up and you're monitoring for a number of hours.
Oh, really? Yeah. So, should we?
I, I certainly think it's something to consider for bike landing view ordinance, for things that may create those.
So, John, what you're, what you're suggesting is that spectral standards apply to.
Grid scale.
Power, you know, grid scale.
Grid scale and then the other two, but at least for now, okay, and then, then as we do the site plan of the audience, we may look at what else we might want to apply it to, I mean, the size of facility, the type of noises that they make.
Right.
Sounds disgusting.
Like FM2.
Yeah, there's a size issue.
Yeah, right.
So, so if you do option B, the only caves, then would be.
The D B levels, but you do, you do adopt.
Well, one, 75.
But no, wait a minute, though, you do adopt it for.
Add the limitations for.
For the grid scale, right, and you make the one change to the decimal, you drop it to 75.
Everybody in agreement with that?
I'm.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We also changed the hours.
Yeah, right, and I think, John, you, you did say that you haven't gotten many complaints from industrial uses, users, right?
Not measurable.
Whatever that means, okay. Yeah, right, it's mostly bars, really, that you've met.
That's right.
Most of them.
Yeah, they've got the most. But I, I did, I did get a complaint from an Olive Head resident, where they completely wiped out all of the buffer between the new subdivision and the industrial park.
But they did that.
And then, yeah, I did that, and they complained about the noise, because they decided to move there next to it, but, you know, I did the best I could, and actually, the company was agreeable, and they, they resolved it to, I thought was satisfactory.
Sure.
The only other one that I've had that's been.